I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen here in Millville, Massachusetts, at 7:01 on Monday, July 24th. And we will start with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just quick introductions, just in case anyone doesn't know anyone, so I'll start with Roland.
Roland Barrett.
Matthew Maile.
Andrew Alward.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Crusotown Administrator.
Okay. So we're short one member today, but that's okay, we still have a quorum. So MES water update and discussion, so there's a lot of different things that we could talk about related to that. So Peter and I met earlier today, so we thought we'd start with this memo that came from Dr. Gullik. So I don't know if anyone's read it, I read the executive summary and a couple more pages. I will make it through the whole thing.
Yep, is the memo a brief scientific and regulatory assessment of water quality at MES?
So I think was, the key takeaways are right on the first page, and then there's kind of more on potential health impacts and things like this. But discusses overall, the quality of the treated water at MES is quite good and currently meets all of the state and federal regulatory requirements with the sole exception of halocetic acids, HAA5. So these are formed when chlorine used for the treatment process reacts with natural organic water. And natural organic should be carbon, right, in the water? Oh, matter, natural organic matter in the water, and are considered as a class of disinfection byproducts. So more detail there, but I thought it might be helpful for us to maybe post this to the website and share this information, because there's a lot of different perspectives on that. So, and Peter, I know you've read this a little bit more thoroughly than I have, so I don't know if you had anything else.
Sure, so basically what this talks about are the facts behind the various notices that had to go out that, you know, are scary to look at, but in reality, they, you know, they're basically required by Mass DEP, so there have been, I don't know, nine notices in the last seven and a half or so years related to this halocetic acid disinfectant byproduct. And of those, it was really only four events which triggered the requirement of the notices. And the measurement level, you know, if you exceed what's called the maximum contaminant level of 60 parts per billion of this disinfectant byproduct in the water, a notice is required. And the notice comes out, it's, you know, using Mass DEP wording that talks about whether there's, you know, safety and health issues and so forth. And so, one of the things that we had when Mass DEP was at your meeting on the 15th, talked about, you know, if you drank water, two liters of that every day for 70 years, that's really the basis upon which they use as a health exposure that you need to at least be aware of. The bulk of the exceedances of the 60 parts per billion and the notices, one of them happened just before I came to Millville, it was over Thanksgiving weekend, that what creates them is too much chlorine going into the system, and then the iron demands and the manganese demands to precipitate it out, so the byproduct comes through, and that's what's measured and exceeds 60 parts per billion. On that weekend, Thanksgiving weekend in 2018, it went up way high, 140 or so, and the requirement of Mass DEP is that they take an average of every quarter, and if you exceed 60 parts per billion using that average, you've got to put out a notice. So there were three subsequent quarters where there wasn't exceedance of actual measurement, but the quarterly requirement required, a notice goes out, so. And then there were two other incidents since then that exceeded the 60 parts per billion, but just before and just after, well below the 60 parts per billion. So anyway, there's some, this helps explain it in some great detail, so the executive summary, I think, is the key place for folks who aren't interested in reading some of the facts, but there's plenty of good facts in here. There's some opinions of Dr. Gullik, but, you know, his opinion, he happens to know this stuff better than most. I think there's a brief description of how the water is treated at MES on one of the pages with a good diagram, talks about beavers, talks about, you know, how these chlorine events happened. Chlorine is not, they call it disinfectant byproduct, but chlorine is not used as a disinfectant in the system. Okay, the disinfection of the system is from ultraviolet light after the water's been treated and before it goes into the system. So their chlorine, in spite of what might have been suggested by, you know, our operator or others, is not used as a disinfectant, and that, that's pretty clear in what's described here. The potential health impacts, some quotes are used for Mass DEP and their warnings and so forth, that's put in there. You know, whether substitute water should be required or not, it wasn't required by Mass DEP. If they put in too little chlorine, iron and manganese can come through, and the situation of, it did come, manganese did come through, and that causes colored water. Okay, and that's unpleasant, but it's not a health risk, okay? We know they don't drink the water, haven't for many years up there anyway, but it is used for food preparation and handwashing of, you know, the staff and the students, and so unpleasant to do that in water that's got color to it. So part, the primary reason why the water came through with manganese was the operator had chosen to lower the threshold of chlorine that was being put into the system in spite of what DEP had recommended and what the town advisor here, Dr. Gullik, had recommended. And that also caused problems with the green sand filters, they need chlorine to keep active, and they lost their, it was like wearing out a battery, I guess is one way to describe it. So the chlorine, the green sand filtration media had to be replaced back in February, basically, and that was premature to the normal lifespan of the green sand, had it been provided at least the right threshold of chlorine. So it's pretty complicated stuff, but at the end of the day, you know, they do, Mass DEP does not consider the surface water to be important to the quality of the water in the well, that would also relate to the beavers, chlorine's not used for disinfection, removal of chlorine would not require any additional, you know, by switching to the permanginate doesn't require anything significantly additional on the part of the treatment. And so it gets into some pretty good details here, I think it's, you know, full disclosure, because I had a couple in here today that was curious about MES water, and I tried to give the Cliff Notes version. It's difficult to condense an understanding of this with anybody, and so I, you know, anybody that's really concerned should probably read through this, they'll see the events that triggered the need for notices. We had recent notices that had to go out that dealt with, you read it and it's a notice, it's scary, but all it's really saying is lead and copper had to have been tested, you know, quarterly, instead it was tested on a six-month basis or whatever it was, and so that was a non-compliance type of thing requiring a notice that had to go out. The notice does show that the lead and copper has been well below, you know, any thresholds that Mass DEP has, so it's that sort of thing. I don't know how much detail you want to go into, but I recommend reading it, I know that Dr. Gullik worked hard to put this together to try to make it readable for the average person. You know, I'm fortunate that I, you know, I was a pre-med major, had a lot of chemistry, and used to teach math and science as a substitute teacher years ago, so it's easier for me to understand this than your, most people, but I still find it very confusing.
Any other questions or comments on the documentation? So I would like to make a motion that we post a brief scientific and regulatory assessment of water quality at the Millville Elementary School to the town website to make it more accessible to the townspeople.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. I was just gonna say, looking for a second. He wanted to beat you, Matthew.
I know. You were. Smoked you. I was off my game.
Any further discussion?
Should we post two separate documents, like just the executive summary, and then the more in full?
So I think if we, like this, because I think it's clear that this is the executive summary on the first page.
Yeah, I know, the only reason I say that is because when people see 15 pages, they kind of like off put by it, so I don't know, it's just a perception thing, we just want to put that one page up there.
I, I think it might, yeah, I don't, I think it might take away from the content if we separate it. But I, that's just my opinion, what other people think.
Well, I think a lot of parents are very, enough concerned that they're gonna take the time to read.
Okay.
But I do agree with Matthew.
Well, maybe for description, put page.
You throw somebody a 15-page report, no, two pages, they're gonna read the two pages.
Maybe you could put page one, I don't know if in the description, put page one, executive summary, and then.
Yeah, we'll try and figure it out to make it, make it clear to people, because I, when Dr. Gullik was drafting this last week, and he sent it to me, it didn't have an executive summary, and so I'm reading through it, and I got lost at page five, I was like, you know, yeah, so I asked for the executive summary, and I also asked for a summary at the end. I tend to follow, you know, tell them what you're gonna tell them, then tell them, and then tell them what you just told them. That's kind of what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Okay, so that somebody can gain enough knowledge from the executive summary as well as the conclusion, but if they want to really understand it, they can go deep, you know, so it's broad then deep. So we'll try and put some wording up there.
Okay, sounds good. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Roland.
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Okay. And then additionally, did we want to post the corrective action plan? I thought that might be helpful, actually, this was Peter's suggestion.
Yeah.
To post the corrective action plan so people could see, like, I mean, basically, this is basically a summary of what we discussed in May, so kind of a three-step process. So we purchased bulk water through the end of the school year.
Yep.
The middle-term fix is the permanginate solution, and then long-term, which I did get in touch with, Ryan Chamberlain from the Blackstone Board of Selectmen, I have a business trip this week, so we're, well, I'm sure I'll be able to meet with him before August 14th.
Yeah.
But I'm, but I didn't get to meet with him before today. So, so it kind of has the three phases in the overall description and things like that.
Yep.
So I thought people might like to see, like, we do have a plan, it's just the execution.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. A lot of people that really read this in depth are gonna wonder, alright, what's the plan, what's plan two? You know, what's the second phase of this? Now that we know what.
Here's what's going on, how are you gonna fix it?
What we can do.
Yeah.
What, what are we actually gonna do?
Yeah. Okay. So.
They'll have, they'll have the situation, what's going on, and what can happen or not happen, and then the resolve, that'll stop the phone from ringing.
Maybe.
A lot.
Or might raise questions and happy to address those.
Yeah, get discussion, which would be great. The engagement would be amazing.
Better than everybody just assuming, and then Facebook blows up with faults.
Misinformation.
I know, that's the problem.
Specious stuff, yes. I know that.
Okay, um, so I'll make a motion to post the corrective action plan to the town's website.
So.
Looking for a sec, okay, thank you, Roland.
You're welcome, see.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Roland?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'll see the old guy, not a phone.
I know, like you're waiting, like Matthew. Okay, okay, so then the plan forward, so we had an email, actually, I shouldn't say we, I had an email, Peter had some email back and forth with Mr. Ferrari, where he asked for a few things, he noted a few things in his report that we should take a look at, and Peter said, well, out of these three, you know, I just want to make sure, because it was in your report, recommendation, you mentioned the following, it turns out to satisfy you and your firm from our professional responsibility concerns with the outline of this report. Of those three, which one or more, based on that comment from the town, would enable you to move forward on the permanginate switch WS34 application? So we presented these three as like, which one's more important?
Yep.
So Peter and I had some discussion today, and Peter got more information from Dr. Gullik. So all three of these introduce more regulatory issues for us and more cost. They're not being required for Mass DEP either. That being said, the last one, to implement a carbon filtration system in a recirculating loop around the water storage tank to reduce TOC and DBPs, that's actually something that could help with PFAS as well. So I think that's something we should probably have to try to reduce the PFAS in the water. So I think we should go back to Mr. Ferrari and say, we'd like you to move forward with the permanginate switch WS34 application, we'd also like you to include in there the carbon filtration system. And then I guess the other, only other thing is, I'm kind of, when Peter and I met with Mary Jude from Mass DEP, kind of gave up on the beavers, like, he's insisting, like, that the beavers are an issue, she even, we'll get to her email in a moment, where she said the beavers are not an issue, but if it takes getting rid of the beavers to move this forward, I'm, I'm kind of okay with that. I don't really want to, but if, I don't want to have, hold up this project any further.
Right.
So I thought those would be the couple of things that we could go back to him with, and Peter, over to you.
Yeah, so the three things listed in this email to Mr. Ferrari were three of the six recommendations that he had in his lengthy report that he did, he wasn't asked to do, but he did, the 84 pages of, or 80 pages of text and a bunch of exhibits and so forth. And you'll, I think you saw some description of that stuff. Are, none of these are necessary, nor actually make a lot of sense of his recommendations, but except for that last one as a way of moving it forward. Personally, I would, you know, if it comes to dealing with the beavers, you know, the word, term used by Mary Jude in our discussion that we had with her was, you know, it's unnecessary and it's animal cruelty, okay? Because they're gonna get killed.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I would not, personally, I'm not gonna have anything to do with that, just because that's my conscientious objector, okay?
Me too.
So I, I, I'm just gonna put that out there. But I, but I think it's really, because it's unnecessary, it's not required, the surface water, as you see in the thing you've approved to put up there, has nothing to do with the water in the well. It's, it's really, it's, it's a distraction, and arguably, there's some hostage holding or hostage-taking of the town in this regard that's not healthy for anybody's relationship.
Right.
I guess the way I describe it.
Oh, I think you already know me, I'm not gonna support getting rid of the beavers.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't know.
If they were definitely causing harm, that's another story.
So I mean, so I know I'm skipping ahead a little bit, but we have this email here that we requested from Mass DEP to post to the website, but if you look at the last three lines up in the email from Mary Jude Piggsley, who's the Regional Director at Mass DEP Central Regional Office, "Mass DEP is not requiring removal of the beaver's, beaver dam, but we do have an application to request a determination that the presence of the beavers may pose a threat to public water supply." So, I mean, I guess we could, if we want to table it and see, like, if he's insisting on it, I would prefer not to do it either, I'm just, I think kids are more important than beavers, so that's why I'm leaning that way, but I've always grown up with animals and I'm not thrilled about doing this either. So I'm kind of like, I'm like, what, we need to do this.
Yep.
What do you want to do this? You want us to get rid of the beavers, we'll get rid of the beavers. You want this carbon filtration system, done. Like, we want to work with you so we can move this forward, so here you go.
So, so the, the other part is, if, if there's no success on the one option of the carbon filters, let's just use that for discussion purposes, and he doesn't want to move forward, and there's another lengthy something or other, you know, that's, that, to me, I would look for your guidance, but that means we're probably dealing with not a long-term relationship, and that there are, and, you know, Dr. Gullik consults in other communities, one of the other communities, he has a separate engineer from the operator because it just made expediency's sake, and, and we may be headed in that direction, I think, if we don't, you know, if this doesn't pass muster. And I, you know, I think the correspondence back and forth suggests that Mr. Ferrari is willing to, you know, he's concerned about his professional reputation, he's the PE stamp on the thing, you know, professional engineer in the design, and that's important, that he is, he's not compromised as he might view it professionally.
Yep.
But, you know, all indications are, and information that you might see here suggests that some of the, some of the positions are not necessary and only cause, so if you, for example, if the beavers are removed and the surface water is then allowed to be drained by conservation, because you'd still have to go through the Conservation Commission, does that then cause a regulatory requirement burden going forward on the town, right? To keep that area free of surface water buildup, free for forevermore or for the foreseeable future of beavers who might come in from another location, which they seem to somehow do, so.
Yeah, this isn't the first time they've removed beavers from the school, I don't think, so they keep coming back.
Yep.
This month.
Yeah.
They are.
So.
I don't know, so, I mean, I, my suggestion is just to try, make, see if we can get Bob to come around on the WS34.
Okay.
Based on option three there, that.
Okay.
Carbon filters not even provide the option of beavers, because it looks like he's kind of given up on that at this stage.
Okay.
From.
I would prefer to not do that, too, especially when we have Mass DEP and Dr. Gullik also saying this is unnecessary.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so then let's take no action on the beaver discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And then I'll make a motion to authorize Town Attorney Peter Crusot to approach Mr. Ferrari that, to move forward with the permanginate switch WS34 application, as well as implement a carbon filtration system in a recirculating loop around the water storage tank to reduce TOC and DBPs. Looking for a second.
Second.
Uh, there. Is there any other discussion?
One quick question, do we know the costs, total costs for all this?
No, no, but in preliminary discussions of the carbon filtration, which has been ongoing for PFAS purposes, you know, it's within the, it's within, I would say, the approved amount from ARPA, okay?
So we're not going over anything yet?
In that regard.
Okay.
Right, there's more to follow on other costs that have been incurred to date, for which I received an invoice today, but I prefer not to get into that this evening.
We'll talk about it next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's stuff that happened since schools closed, though.
So that's stuff that's happened in the last, that's happened leading up to this.
Yep.
Process, okay? So the, including the lengthy report that wasn't asked for, but there's invoicing for that.
So we got invoiced for something we didn't ask for?
Yes.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So it will be a disputed item, and much of it, there will be some disputes involved, and there will be likely that any payment will, for a good portion of it, will be prior year bill at a upcoming town meeting, because the services were provided before June 30th, much of the services.
Yep, okay.
Okay. So Andrew, does that satisfy you? Do you have any other concerns?
I mean, no, but at this point, we don't have any information, so I guess that.
Okay.
Leaves that there.
Well, I still believe it's gonna, at the end of the day, it's gonna be cheaper than trucking water.
Yeah, I think so, too.
So.
Sure, come up to the table, please, Mr. Maile.
Jason Maile, 510 Chestnut Hill. So I remember watching the Joint School Committee and Select Board meeting.
In May.
In May, and it seemed like the hot topic was the PFAS.
Yep.
And it was, from what the DEP had, had said, there's gonna be a ton of money, grant money.
Yep.
Anything PFAS relatable, is there any way to take this whole plan and package it as something towards PFAS?
So the issue is, we've had so many violations that we need to correct those.
Correct first.
First, and that's why I reached out to Ryan Chamberlain, who's the Chair of the Board of Selectmen in Blackstone, to see if we can tap into their water system, if they want to do that, if they have the capacity, and that application process will start up, I think she said October, so I'm hoping to meet with him before the August 14th meeting, and we can maybe come to an agreement.
Nice.
Yeah, so we are looking to take advantage of that, and there's two pockets of money, one is like a $39 million, I think, which would be completely free, and then there's another pocket of money.
That you borrow.
That we would borrow, and we would get 12 and a half percent forgiveness on the loan.
And the 39 or 38 or whatever it is, is.
Yeah, 38, I think.
What they'll have available for grants, for which Millville is at the top of the list, but not for all of it, but more like 2 million or something.
Yeah.
That's really, I think, the magnitude.
And is what you're voting on tonight gonna satisfy what the school, the school district's looking for? Because I know at their last meeting, they were kind of fickle about, they had some deadlines, that sort of thing.
So I don't know what deadlines they're referring to, because when we met with Mary Jude on July 12th, she says, or is it, I missed it last time, too, public water, "Mass DEP does not require bulk water for non-potable uses, nor does the violation require closure of the school." So I don't know what other, what other governing body they're getting information from that they need to close the school, because Mass DEP says they do not.
I think it was, I think it was kind of trying to strong.
Yeah, but it just seemed like that very specific.
I don't mind them pushing us, like, being aggressive, like, this has been.
Permits to be filed.
To be fair, from May to July, like, when we had this meeting, like, I expected to see more movement, too.
Yep.
So that I think that helped become a catalyst to move Mr. Ferrari, to move us, to move everyone, like, we need to start putting, you know, pen to paper, road meets the road, whatever metaphor you want to use, you just, I need to see action.
I get it, I do that at work, I kind of push the envelope when people aren't responding the way I hope.
I think they were looking for permits, something to show.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the permit, so hopefully, when Peter speaks with Mr. Ferrari, you know, first thing tomorrow morning, he says, hey, we discussed this, we'd like to work with you on the carbon filtration system, can you move forward on this? And then are you, and then see, see if we can work together.
And was that why I was asking these questions, so that maybe they're watching this, and this information will become.
Yeah, I plan on attending the school committee meeting on Thursday as well, so.
Thanks, folks.
Yeah, no, ask as many questions as you want. Okay. So we had discussion, I don't think I called for the vote yet.
Mm-mm.
Okay, Roland?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, let's see, where are we in my, okay, plan forward, there we go, okay. So the other thing, too, is there was a little bit of, in the emails around, like, who we have involved and things like that. So when I look at who we have involved in our conversations, we have Mass DEP with Mary Jude, and many other resources there, who've been fantastic. We had Dr. Gullik, who's recommended by Congressman McGovern, so he said, look, this is the person we're working with, and then Mr. Ferrari, who has the history and richness of, like, this is what we did before, and all those other things. So I personally like having three people involved, because if, like, say, Mass DEP says one thing, and Mr. Ferrari says another, for example, like, on the beavers, it's, I need a tiebreaker. So I like having Dr. Gullik continued involvement as well, and I think, and Peter and I were discussing this today, like, I think he just wants to get us to a point where this is kind of humming along, of like, seems like my work is done here, I'm gonna go away, if a question comes up, you want to talk to me, I'm here, but I'm planning on, like, fading away.
Sure.
Like, I think that's his ultimate goal, is he doesn't want this constant memo writing and research and all these other things, I think he wants to just get us moving along. Does anyone have any concerns with keeping those three bodies involved?
I don't know.
All right. All right, should we take a motion on that, Peter, what do you think?
I think we understood, understand, I think you're good.
Okay. Okay, and then lastly, just because this did, was discussed at the July 10th meeting, where they, the school committee said perhaps we need to close Millville Elementary School or move children around and those other things, so a couple of things. So one is, I refer to this email from Mary Jude that she sent at 5:13 PM on July 12th, and I asked her if we could post this to the website, I don't think it's an issue, I'll ask.
She's away, yeah.
Yeah, she's away, so I'll ask her contact, but just to read part of it, so it says, "Finally, because the town remains out of compliance with drinking water standards for disinfection byproducts as of Quarter Two for 2023, the town must distribute another public notice to the school population and continue to provide bottled water. Mass DEP does not require bulk water for non-potable uses, nor does the..." does not require bulk water for non-potable uses, nor does the violation require closure of the school. We will provide you with the form of public notice with instructions for distribution. So, um, I don't, Mass DEP is not requiring closure of the school, I guess, just to be very clear.
Yep.
And then when we look at the regional agreement, D and E, and I'm gonna focus on E and Peter, if you think we need to go back to D, you can, I'll punt it over to you. Says, in the event that a school located in a particular member town is rendered unusable, the committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent may temporarily reassign the students attending said school to an alternate, alternate location or to the schools of the other member town. If the student relocation is expected to be less than two weeks, the superintendent may make this decision without a committee vote. So I guess, I don't know what rendered unusable means when Mass DEP says, does not require, this violation does not require closure of the school. Um, now, I know everyone's frustrated that this has been going on. This has been going on since Peter's been here. My children attended MES, and so I remember then other issues, too. So I'm, I guess I'm just, I'm not sure why the building would be closed. I guess the current water situation at Millville Elementary School is not a reason to close the school.
That's not the case.
So I don't know if anyone else has any comments or concerns or questions?
It's been an ongoing issue for, I'd say, decades at this point, so...
Why are we moving the students now when it's been not like this forever, and Mass DEP says we don't need to close it?
Basically.
So, like, if this happened maybe in 2010, or I don't know, whenever the first violation happened. When was the first violation, Peter? Do you know?
Uh, seven and a half years ago.
Seven and a half years ago.
Whatever that was, 2014-ish or something, or, no.
16, 15, 16?
I don't know.
So if it was closing, hey, we had a water violation, we're closing, we're moving...
Monitoring DBPs.
Yeah. So...
But again, if you read the facts that are gonna be up on the website, it's not really that significant a health risk anyway. It has been a handful of events that have caused the need for the notices to go out. So it's the notices that are alarming, and it's a pain in the neck. The poor school has to send them out to all the parents and the staff. You know, it's hard to understand what the notice is really saying. It's just, it's a, it's a scary notice, and so people get alarmed. That, that's totally understandable.
Yep.
And nobody's gonna believe it when you say the water's perfectly fine, drink it. You know, that's, that can be hard to believe unless you do, you know, read this thoroughly. And you might say, okay, I guess it's not really that significant a health risk, if at all, frankly, right? But nonetheless, you know, poor, you know, the super, poor Dr. DeFalco, you know, he's the focal point of all of the
Getting a lot of...
Concerns from the parents and all of that, and he's frustrated. We're all frustrated by the lack of action in getting this application in for the switch to permanginate, because that solves all the DBP problems that cause all these notices, right?
Yep.
It's a, it's the better, it's the preferred way to go that everybody's on board with. So I'm hoping that Doc, uh, Bob Ferrari comes around on the, you know, the olive branches that seem to be going back and forth here.
Yeah. No, that would be great. And I guess the one other thing I would add is, because we met with Mary Jude and we did have violations, that, and they were off on a percentage basis, not a lot, but it, it's really like kind of an on and off switch. It's not like, in the analogy I used our meeting, is you can't be a little bit pregnant.
That's right.
You are or you aren't. So the water is not like, it's not a little off, it's a violation.
That's right. And there will be, um, I think there'll be two, there have been two violations, or maybe, there, there are gonna be four violations related to DBPs, disinfection byproduct, exceedance of the 60 parts per billion, back in February, when the change to the green sand filters took place, and they had to jumpstart it by putting in a ton of chlorine.
Yeah.
And it goose the, the DBPs coming out high. And so, even if we come below, you know, at 40 or less, the average is gonna be high, and there'll be notices for a full year. There'll be two, at least three quarters worth, probably four quarters worth of notices.
Because it's the average. So, okay.
That's okay. If I, just say one thing about, uh, point of clarity on Mary Jude. I have to, I want to follow up with Bob Bostwick, the, the guy who really deals with the details of Millville Water. And, uh, on, as far as I'm aware, we are not required by Mass DEP to provide bottled water. Nobody's, there's no requirement for that. She makes that statement. So I want to follow up with him and say, I'm not aware, is there something I've missed that we're require, that there's a requirement for that? And if so, what is, what causes the requirement? Um, you know, because they're all about, you're pregnant or you're not pregnant, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know what causes to be pregnant that causes us to provide bottled water.
I think it's just the violation, out of compliance, as of Q2.
Yeah, but then, but it's really, so I, I don't know that. So I want to follow up with them to be sure.
Okay.
Because I don't, from talking to Dr. Gullik, there's no known requirements of that.
Okay.
From his perspective. And he, his business is water compliance solutions, so...
Okay. Well, ask, yeah.
I'll ask Bob Bostwick. I just want to point that out, that that may not be an accurate statement she put in there, not to disparage her by any means. Just some clarity.
Well, she says we need to provide bottled water.
Yes, but one could, well...
We'll figure out the division of costs there, which I think is another discussion that I know our attorneys are still working on. But if she's, if Mass DEP says we need to provide bottled water, then we need to provide bottled water. If they say, actually, you don't, then fine. She does say here, so right now, I'm going on the assumption we need to.
That's fair.
And when she, when, if you hear something...
I will find out for sure.
That's right. If it, if the answer changes, then fine, but I'm going by, right now, we need to provide bottled water, because that's what it says in the email.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Any other questions, concerns?
I sent you a memo that I received, just clarity of some of the solutions suggested, just for your further education.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn at 7:38 PM?
Second.
Thank you, Roland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you for attending our meeting.